Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for December 20th, 2021 to order. It's six o'clock. We're going to go into executive session. In a moment, we'll get a motion on that. We will be doing executive session downstairs in the Selectmen's office and returning to this room no later than 6:30 PM. Mary?
I move that we go into executive session for two items. First, pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss litigation strategy with respect to the case of Ember Pizza Inc. et al. versus Town of Harwich et al., Suffolk County Superior Court, Civil Docket Number 2184 CV01461. If discussing the matter in open session will have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position, and the chair so declares. The second item is pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions. If an open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position, and the chair so declares.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session as read. Roll call, Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for December 20, 2021. Back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session. We discussed two items. First was to discuss litigation strategy with respect to the case of 2184 CV01461. That is the Ember Pizza Inc. et al. versus Town of Harwich et al., Suffolk Superior Court, Civil Docket Number, which I just read. If the, if there would be a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position, and the chair so declares. We had an update from our attorney on that. And then the second item was to discuss with respect to collective bargaining, all town unions, if there would be a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position, and the chair so declares. With that, we will move on to the pledge of allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Dawn, will you start, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have the sad duty to report two passings this past week. The first is John O'Brien. John O'Brien passed away on Friday. He was a teacher prior to arriving in Harwich. He came to be elected to the Harwich School Committee, where he was a fierce advocate for the children of our town, and we're surely going to miss him. The second one was Dr. Stanley Colcott, who passed away this past week. He came to the town as a former chief of medicine at the hospital where he worked. I had the privilege of interviewing him in the early 2000s for a Board of Health opening. He was unanimously appointed and eventually became its chair. He served with quiet grace and an immense amount of intelligence. Both in and out of office, I found him to be a true gentleman, and he will surely be missed.
Thank you, Dawn. Okay, moving on to the public comments and announcements. Joe, will you start?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you have printed there, the board will not be meeting next Monday, December 27th. So the next board meeting will be Monday, January 3rd, 2022. And also just a reminder that the board has scheduled a public hearing or the chance for the public to hear presentation on Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, here in the Griffin Room on proposed changes to the Montemoi Regional Agreement. So that will happen, board's first meeting of the new year, Monday, January 3rd, and then the meeting to discuss or hear Dr. Carpenter talk about proposed changes to the regional agreement on Tuesday the next night.
Thank you, Joe.
Same time, Joe?
Correct. 6:30 here at the Griffin Room.
Public comment and announcement?
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. I have some happy news. The Festival Trees fundraiser that just closed prior to coming here this evening at four o'clock, we are happy to announce we raised $12,525 for the Family Pantry. This was the fifth annual fundraiser, and this correlates, according to Chris Menard, the executive director, to 50,100 meals that will be provided to people in need. This is what it's all about, giving back to our community. I want to thank everyone from our wonderful members who decorated and donated trees, to everyone who bid on the 32 trees we had this year. I am extremely proud and grateful for what we accomplished this year, so thank you all.
Thank you, Cindy.
Ed McManus, President of the Lower Cape Quanis Club. I'm just here for this portion just to thank all the folks who donated coats and hats and socks and mittens to the Warm Things Drive. We did. I think we collected a little over 125 coats and miscellaneous mittens, socks and hats, somewhat over 200. They've been, a portion were distributed out to the Hands of Hope Pantry, run by the Council of Churches in West Harwich. Another batch was sent to Lower Cape Outreach in Orleans, and we have the last batch that needs to go to the Family Pantry here in Harwich. But it'll keep a number, quite a number of people warm through this, as we get into the cold of winter. And just a comment on the news that Mr. Howard brought up. I also knew both of the individuals and worked with them in a variety of capacities, and they were true gentlemen, true assets to the Town of Harwich and to our Commonwealth, because they both had long histories. I knew John O'Brien, I think, better than Dr. Colcott, but I think everybody thought of him as a school teacher, but at Dedham High School, he was also the ice hockey coach, and a much beloved figure in that community. So we will all miss them and their contributions to our town.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Moving on to the consent agenda?
I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda, which has four items. First is to approve the Assistant Town Administrator's recommendation to grant permission of Verizon New England Inc. and N-Star Electric Company, DBA Eversource Energy, for the purpose to place one jointly owned pole, pole 243 over 3.5 at Fourth Street in the public right-of-way as new pole is needed to support low-hanging wires currently tied to trees. Second is to approve a Caleb Chase request in the amount of $968.72. The agenda listed it as 1,000, but I'm told that's been corrected.
Right.
So it's 968.72. Third is to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, May 24th, 2021. And last is to accept a gift to the Police Department of a Gunner Transport Kennel.
It's moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. New Business Annual Committee Meeting, Historic District Historical Commission. We have the report in the packet. Is there anyone here tonight? Okay, the report is in the packet. If you have any questions, we can certainly circulate that back to Mary, the chair. There will be no Housing Committee report tonight. As previously mentioned, the Housing Committee hasn't met in about a year, and they are waiting for a meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust, a joint meeting. After that's done, we will have a board meeting with the Committee to discuss the new charge. All right. Discussion and possible vote to approve committee appointments recommended by the Interview Committee. Dawn, I'll ask you to read that motion, but I will say that I'm going to ask that we leave out number two, Phyllis Thomason, Full Position Recreation and Youth Commission. I had several phone calls, and it appears there's two or three more applicants, and I think we should, in fairness, interview each applicant before we put a recommendation forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I totally agree. I brought that up before. There is nothing in the charter, but we have been trying for years to create an atmosphere where people felt welcome and wanted to apply. Both this and the treasure chest, more people that we need to interview. And in fairness, we need to see everybody who's willing before we pull the trigger and make a recommendation. So with that, proposed appointments for tonight, we recommend Eileen Garrity to a full position in the Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee with a term to end June 30th, 2023. Martha Donovan to a full position as the Selectmen's appointee to the Capital Outlay Committee with a term to expire June 30th, 2023. And Wayne Coulson as an alternate member for the Conservation Commission with a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Discussion, Julie?
I just have a question on, so I see that the Capital Outlay Committee's been added here, but it wasn't advertised as it. Can we still go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay.
Had the same thought.
That's all I see.
As long as the board's okay. I'm okay.
Yeah, as long as we can.
I don't know how that got dropped. The recommendation that came out of my computer was included the Capital Outlay Committee.
Is the board okay going forward with this, or do you want to bring it back for a vote next week, next month?
I'm okay with it.
I'm fine, as long as it's fine.
The big, important thing for everybody to recognize is there are different people who were brought to the Capital Outlay Committee from different directions. This is one of our appointees.
Yeah. But you and Larry interviewed.
We did interview an outstanding candidate.
Yeah, good.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. Next is discussion and possible vote on the Cultural Center Gymnasium use and fee schedule. We had this last week, and it was not clear what we were charging. And we asked that Eric Beebe come back. Eric is here tonight. Eric, would you join us? I appreciate you putting what you put together.
Yeah.
Still unclear of what we're charging.
Sure.
So can you, pickleball, $35 for residents, $50 grandfathered non-residents. What does the $35 get you?
Well, so the $35 gets you the use of the pickleball courts indoors, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from 8 to 12.
So that's $35 a week.
$35 for the whole winter season. Period.
So you pay $35, and you get to use that gym Monday, Wednesday and Friday for the whole year?
Yeah. Well, for the winter season.
For the winter?
Yeah. Yep.
Which is what?
Which is, it started basically, you know, late November, December 1st, and that'll get us through March, mid-March, once they start getting back outside. But just to clarify, for the Cultural Center Gymnasium itself, up until now, you know, the rec department has been almost like a tenant of there. So when we have a program run out of there, we submit the paperwork, or we did submit the paperwork, to the building manager at the time to get approved.
Who was?
Carolyn Carey.
Right, okay.
So we had no control over scheduling of the gym. We just run the program itself that's in there.
Okay. And what does pickleball pay, if anything, for the outdoor courts for the rest of the season?
It's 25 for the spring and summer season, and 35 for non-residents.
Okay. And then, out of the 35 and 50, the only thing the Cultural Center gets is $10?
Per registrant. Yep.
Per registrant?
Yep.
Okay. Questions from the board, starting with Mary?
I don't know that I have any questions.
Okay. Dawn?
It's not so much of a question as an observation. I mean, it seems, that's a really good deal, but we're really trying to create a business plan for the Cultural Center that's sustainable. I'm not sure that this gets us there.
Julie?
No, I don't really have specific questions. I noticed that the other thing, which we talked about in the last meeting, so footsaw gets to go into the Cultural Center, right?
Yep.
And there's no fee charged to the participants, is that right?
No. So what I understand about footsaw, I did hear from the last meeting, I watched the tape, footsaw is there every Saturday. I don't believe they're charged to use the gym. I'm 99% sure of that. Again, that's out of my purview, but it is a free program run by the HPD. So they only requested Saturdays, and they were given Saturdays.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have any other question.
Eric, what does, what does the Cultural Center pay, if anything, for maintenance on that gymnasium, custodian?
I'm not sure. That's nothing that I, that was ever under me, so I'm not sure what the costs were to the gymnasium itself. The way we priced the pickleball was to cover our costs. That's why the, you know, it is a low price. It's a great deal for, and it's a service that we provide. We're basically trying to cover balls, you know, some leftover paddles, some nets, and a monitor that's there. So when you break it up to so many people that are signed up, it's really a low cost. And we are looking to expand it to Tuesdays and Thursdays as well.
Larry Ballantyne sent me an email today with his comments, and it just said, "I'm sure these are well thought out. I would be more comfortable if we start with these, with the understanding that fees will be evaluated when we get the detailed expense report from Joe," which he's doing on the Cultural Center. I did read an email that Ralph passed out
Sure.
last week.
Yep.
That was written to, I'm not sure who, but not the Board of Selectmen. And in that fee, in that letter, he said that he, they wanted to extend pickleball, and they were getting a runaround from the town.
Yeah.
"I'm not comfortable approving any extra time until we come up with a reasonable fee for this gym. And as you go through your fee schedule and what other people are paying for three hours for $100 for the gym, I think pickleball, you said it's a great deal. I'd say it's a great deal. $35 for 100 to 150 participants
Sure.
to be in that gymnasium for three to four months, with $10 going back into the Cultural Center. And I don't see how we're ever going to get past the critics of keeping that building if those are the rates we're going to charge."
And just, you know, to see both sides of it, I do totally understand the argument that if there's two days that are wide open, why not use it?
Agreed.
I totally agree with that. I was trying to look at the bigger picture, to see if people, if there was any private entities that wanted to come in and pay the going rate to bring in some more revenue to keep the building open. But as far as I know, there's nobody waiting in the wings to book the gym. If there was, I would assume it would be more after-school times, some basketball teams, things like that wanting to have practices there. So the Tuesday, Thursday that we were looking at, it would be like an 8 to 11 or 8 to 12. Like I said, there's nobody that's waiting for that spot. It's just wide open at the moment. But, you know, obviously, that's your decision.
I would just say that we haven't, I know Lighthouse Charter Schools made a request to use that gym, and that would be off-hours, not during school hours.
Yep.
And I know there's been several requests over the last year, year and a half, for people to use that gym. And I'm not opposed to looking at a schedule.
Sure.
But I'm certainly opposed to what the current fee schedule is, knowing that it's not even covering the cost to turn the lights on and pay the custodians to be in that building. Mary?
Knowing that we're looking to get, Joe just presented a warrant article last week to get a person that would be in charge of the center, including the finances, do we need to wait for that to look at these cost issues? Because if we do, I don't see any harm in letting pickleball use it as long as they know this is a temporary okay, until someone in charge really looks at rates and structure.
Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand where Mary's coming from. My question is, we haven't retrofitted the, Joe, have we? The lights in the gymnasium, and that, they're not high efficiency in any way, are they?
I don't believe so, but I can check with Sean Libby in the morning.
I mean, because those high-intensity, older lights chew up a lot of electricity. And I know, and I was actually reminiscing about Rocky Clark, and a couple of other people renting the elementary school gym back in the day, and it cost us more 20 years ago to rent the gym for kids to play basketball than we're charging now. I don't even think we're covering the electricity, and that concerns me.
I personally, Joe, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this, but I'd like, and I know there's a willingness from several of the pickleball, I don't want to call them kingpins, but people that play the league, they've shown a willingness to pay more.
Sure.
They're paying the rate that they were given. And I don't know, Eric, if you have a contact there and want to go back and try and negotiate a better fee for the town that covers our cost or more than covers our cost and bring it back to us. But I wouldn't feel comfortable giving them two more days, whether it's being used or not, because I don't believe we're covering our costs.
Yep, okay.
Joe?
So for me, I think there's two different things that play here, pardon the expression. But, because Eric, you caught my ear when you said, "We're looking to expand Tuesday through Thursday." And I had always looked at anyone that used that building as an outside party. And so I understand now that the rec department technically is the rentor of the gymnasium to sponsor pickleball that then goes through these folks. We do have, so Megan-
Excuse me. Camera's picking you up.
To the, to Selectman Anderson's comment about the warrant article, you know, Megan's been over there checking in on a regular basis. We do have a person coming on board in the next couple of weeks as a day-to-day resource to cover the office. But as we spend time there, we're hearing from more organizations that are inquiring about the gym. And so what I see now is we've got the rec department using the gym at rec department rates. We have other community-based groups that would be looking to use that, but would pay a far greater rate. So to your point about the fees, I think we can do, we can look at it now in the interim, but also that would be incumbent upon the director to really flesh out a better fee schedule for that, because $35 for a season versus $100 for three hours is pretty significant difference. And we are hearing that there are other groups that are looking to use it. Now, to Eric's earlier point, we're not hearing anyone yet that's looking to use it during the day. So I wouldn't have any objection to expanding it for pickleball use, except that, that's, I would think the current structure is they're getting more hours for no additional fees coming into the town. And I think that's a bad look. But that's something that could be explored at the staff level. I do think, well, one of the things I asked Eric to talk about this evening was Megan and I met with Eric and the rec and youth chair about three weeks ago, initially to talk about this, and I broached the subject of would they like another gym? And both Eric and John were a little bit taken back by that, but my point was, the town owns the community center, which has a gymnasium in it. The town owns the Cultural Center, it has a gymnasium in it. So do we want recreation to have a strong role presently in letting people know that there's another gym for rent? And so that is something else we can explore in the short term.
Anything to add, Eric?
No, I totally agree with everything Joe says. I mean, we can use the gym. The more gym time we have, the better. The only thing that holds us back right now is staffing. But that's something that's slowly getting better for us as we go on. We did have a after-school program that ran there last spring. Right now, it's at the community center. The reason we were doing it there is because we couldn't transport the kids in the van with COVID regulations. But staff willing, we could even have an after-school program in dual locations, if, you know. So we would definitely make use of it if it was, you know, if we could. As far as the Tuesday, Thursday pickleball, what we would look to do if that was approved is to make that a separate, not a separate program, but another addition to the program. So there'd be the Monday, Wednesday, Friday program, and then the Tuesday, Thursday program for an additional fee, obviously, which would be another $10 per person. So it'd still be a nominal fee, so it'd still be very affordable for the pickleball players, and it would also bring in a little more money for the building itself.
Thank you. Julie?
So on that note, so if you had a group with Tuesday, Thursday during the times that would not conflict with school.
Yep.
You're talking about 35 per player, so let's just say you got 20 people. I don't know if that's feasible, right? So you get 20 people times 35. If you get, and I understand the point of, you know, we've got maybe other outside sources interested in that gym, but 100 bucks for three hours, and if they're only interested in it for one or two times, that's only like 200 bucks, right? Whereas the pickleball is going to bring in a little bit more overall.
Yeah.
Well, pickleball, too, is listed in our packet as 100 to 150 participants.
Yeah, but not for the Tuesday, Thursday, you wouldn't be able to have, you'd have like maybe 20 people or something.
You know, actually, I think it would be pretty similar. I think quite a few people would sign up for Tuesdays and Thursdays as well.
Sounds like it's a big group.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but that's good. But you couldn't do 100 people, and could you do that many people in the Tuesday?
In a, I mean, we do it now with the, with the three, three days, so we could do close to that with the two days. If it was eight to 12, you know, four hours and time slots of an hour and a half or so, or two hours, yeah.
I mean, I like Mary's idea of the fact that while we try to go forward with, you know, what we're dealing with and hiring somebody, we've got space. And if it's not, with the understanding that it may be a three or four-month program, and it may not be, you know, offered again.
Yeah.
But it serves a need.
And the only thing we're waiting for on our end is, you know, not waiting for, but there's staffing also. We do have a pickleball monitor that's there on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. It would mean bringing somebody in on Tuesdays and Thursdays as well. It would have to be a new person. The person that does Monday, Wednesday, Friday is currently booked up. But we have several leads in that category waiting in the wings, so.
Thank you, Eric.
Mary?
Why wouldn't we approve maybe for three months, January through March? Let pickleball take Tuesday and Thursday. Give Joe and the staff time to sort out what we're going to do. We could always extend it if at that point you wanted to wait until you got that position in place. We could extend it, but at least, let's not let it sit idle.
Dawn?
I'm still where I was. If it could be used and we net out to zero, that's fine. But lights in gymnasiums are really power-hungry.
Well, it's lights, it's custodian, it's opening and closing the building.
Even if we didn't get as far as the custodian, those lights wouldn't be on without the program. So the custodian would probably be in a building, you know, for other reasons. But the lights get me, because they're high intensity, they're probably sodium vapor, if they're old enough.
But I'm going to open it up now to anyone in the public that wishes to speak.
I'm Eric Gordon, Levin Harvest Hollow Drive. And I play a lot of pickleball, and I've been playing for probably five years and at the Cultural Center ever since it opened up. And one of the things I want to make sure, I want to clarify, based on what Eric said, is the past practice, if I remember correctly, has been that there's been, there have actually been two signups. One in, one for the fall that ends on December 31st, and a second sign up with a second payment, a full payment. In fact, the second payment has been a little bit more than the first payment. I don't remember what it was, but I believe it was $25 for the first payment. That got you to on December 31st, and then $35 for residents that got you from January 1st to whenever the spring, outdoor season started. So I don't know if that was clear based on-
No, if we could pause for one second. I don't have that. I don't have those numbers. That's not part of what we've gotten.
Okay.
So I'm confused now.
But I believe that's what the past practice was. I believe that most of my fellow pickleball players, if not all, are expecting that there'll be another sign up and another, and we write another check. And that's also been in the past for five days, at least the last two years, even, you know, right through COVID. So I think that should, that should be clear. It hasn't been $35 or $25 for an entire six-month season. And I'd also say that it's a, as Eric said, it is a real service. It's recreation, it's, it's a little bit of competition, it's socialization, it's structure for the people who go there. You can sign up 60 or 70 people on any given day, maybe 20 to 25 show up, but it might be, there's an overlap in terms of the, in terms of the people. So it's impacting many people in a very positive way with a real quality experience, an experience that people kind of come to depend on. It's almost like for retirees going to work, it's a place to go, a structure, something to do, the same people, colleagues, your friends that you're, that you're playing with all the time. And it's, it's something special about living in Harwich, because a lot of other towns don't have this. And I think we should keep it, and we should expand it. Thank you.
I hope we can count on all of you to come vote for the Cultural Center in keeping it when that vote comes up. I would certainly like to see a real fee schedule. I would like to see a proposal from, now that Eric Beebe's running this, whether it's interim for three months or not. But the second payment is new- it's interim for three months or not, but the second payment is new to me, it's not in the packet. Um, what is the cultural center ultimately getting? Because the number that we got last week was twenty-five hundred for the whole year out of that gymnasium, which is certainly not enough money to come in for that amount of square foot in a building that we're, that the, that the entire town's paying for, and that we're being scrutinized for not bringing in enough money in that building. So I would like to fee, see a fee schedule, and I certainly think the fee needs to be increased, and the cultural center needs to get a, a larger portion of that, um, to cover the costs at very least. To vote on it tonight, I think, would be premature, but I will leave that up to the board to make, if anyone wants to make a positive motion, we'll go with it. Joe?
Well, and I don't mean to belabor the discussion, but in the handout you have, on direct department uses, there's two bullet points. The first one talks about the Adele pickleball program that we've been talking about this evening, and it shows thirty-five dollars a resident, fifty dollars for grandfathered, ten of which goes to the cultural center. And then the second bullet point talks about an after-school program where it's a hundred dollars per session. So if I heard correctly, and if I could, Mr. Chairman, if you want to have the rec director come back up, but it sounds like that we're charging thirty-five dollars for the winter session for pickleball, but we're charging a hundred dollars per session for a school program.
Mm-hmm.
So we're charging families with school-age kids three times what we're charging pickleball players.
Eric?
Yeah, the reason for that, there's a lot more cost associated with the after-school program. Um, we usually have a lot more staff with the kids, um, there's a lot more supplies and things like that. Pickleball, it's one monitor and a case of balls here and there, and that's it. Um, so that, that's the reason. The, the money that we bring in for the after-school program is pretty much money in, money out, uh, to pay for our staff. It's usually, we try to keep it ten to one for the kids, so we usually have at least two staff there, um, and there is quite a bit of equipment and stuff like that involved.
Thank you. And then my other concern, just generally, uh, and this doesn't have to do with Eric, but we have our, our town gym, if you will, at the community center that the rec department is historically known for. We have another gym that the town owns, and it's a hundred dollars for three hours. So I do think there's a chance for us to look at this and try to normalize everything so that it really doesn't matter which gym you're using, they're all town gyms, and I think we'd want to have a similar fee structure for, for other programs. Cause I do think, you know, what Megan had heard from these other groups is they weren't aware that there was another town gym, so that, you know, that's on us to market it that way, if you will. Um, so I do think if we start talking about that part, portion of the building as another town gym, we can get more interest. And not that it runs contrary to pickleball, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do those expanded hours, because it's the time of day that no one's looking for. But I do think we could get more people, perhaps nights and weekends.
Julie, go ahead.
Just for clarification, though, because I know my, my kids attended the after-school program, and that's a five-day-a-week program versus pickleball, which is three days a week.
Yes.
So, you know, to me, that was one of the greatest deals in town. So I just want to point that out, that that's a marvelous program, and I, you know, I, I understand that, you know, it is on us to, to market the additional gym, because that is, you know, that, that's a great resource we have, and I think we kind of touched upon that last week. So that's on the board, that's on the new person who gets hired, but I, I hate to see space that's not being used currently, if we could get something for it, for those, you know, with the understanding it's temporary, and unless there's some reason that the new hire comes in and thinks that that can go on.
Right.
Why not use the space?
And I'd just like to see a fee schedule that makes sense. How many da- how many days we're using the gym, what the hours they're using the gym are, how much money we're bringing in for those days and hours, and how much the cultural center's getting and any room for improvement, and your proposal on what the new two days would be.
Okay.
And, and I would ask the board, I mean, like I said, I, I'm, it's up to the board where they want to go with this, but I don't, I don't have enough information, and I would say right up front, I don't think right now, for the five months that we're talking about, for thirty-five dollars a person and fifty for non-residents, with only ten going back to the maintenance of that building and the lights, is enough money. I just, I don't see it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't disagree. We were just kind of paying what we were told to pay, up until now.
I just need more numbers and, and a different proposal. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to be, just to be clear, because I'm a little confused here, we're not talking about pulling away any, what they're currently getting in the meantime, while we're looking at the fee schedule, right?
No.
Okay.
I'm not.
Well, I guess I have one more question.
Go ahead.
So if we need a fee schedule, and I don't disagree with you that we need to look at that, but is that information that you could have for next week's? Because I would imagine that you'd like, if you were going to do this program, you'd like to do it in the new year.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we'd like to do it as soon as possible. If we did the Tuesday, Thursday, and I could, I could come back with a, a proposal as far as what we would charge. Um, but, you know, we've already signed up everybody for the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, um, so I don't know if you want me coming back charging a lot more for Tuesday, Thursday for the remainder of the season, it would kind of be lopsided. And as far as the, the numbers that are here, I mean, there is a fall session, but the twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars is about what comes in for the ten dollars per person to the cultural center range. There's a short fall period, but this one that I'm referring to here is the, the winter period.
That twenty-five to three would include the after-school program, though, correct?
Yeah.
With those numbers?
Yep, yep.
So a hundred and fifty, if your, if your number's on the high.
Yep.
The one fifty times ten is fifteen hundred.
Yep.
Is the max that we're bringing in on this group, right?
Yeah, at the max, yep.
For, 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 for the winter months?
For the winter, yes, yep.
I, I would, I would just like to see it clarified. And just for the record, the next meeting would be?
Oh, it's not.
Monday?
It's gonna be very long, isn't it?
Not Monday.
I'm not commenting.
The third.
Okay.
Is when we would be, and certainly I think the board could be ready to vote by then, if we have the information in the packet.
Sure.
I'm not as concerned about the second two days being more than the first and not changing the first.
Okay.
Because personally, the board will vote where the board votes, but.
Sure.
It's lopsided, I think, on the, on the, uh, program side than the, than the reality of the cost of running that building.
Sure.
Anything else? Board, all set?
I'm not sure I'm following all of this, but in the meantime, the gym stands empty Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Correct.
Nobody's using it, nobody wants it, just sits there.
Two weeks.
And we're being deprived of the opportunity to play.
Two weeks.
Pardon?
Two weeks, yes.
What's two weeks?
Coming back in two weeks to vote on this with a fee schedule.
Okay.
And just so, just, just to put it out there for the entire public, the gym hasn't been offered to anyone else either. So it's not just your request to extend it, because you're the, basically the only user of it, because we haven't offered it to any other rec programs or school programs. So right now, you've been operating in a vacuum, and it's only been yours.
But bear in mind, it's been eight in the morning until eleven o'clock. There aren't a whole lot of folks that I understand would be wanting it at that, at during those hours, so.
Possibly.
Okay. Otherwise, you have my suggestions.
Thank you. On D, Mary, I could just go with a motion on D if you'd like.
Um, sure. I move that we vote on the cultural district's resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four-zero. Uh, discussion and possible vote to participate in the statewide opiates, opioid settlement. Um, Joe, this is on, on you. We all got an email, uh, asking if we wanted to join in on this. A past board voted not to join in on this, because I believe the recommendation from councils, we have to prove our losses. But that's my recollection. Joe?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So slightly different program. Um, staff had the same recollection as the board. Um, so what this gets to is, uh, the, the program that the town was offered, uh, the opportunity to participate in, uh, was the National Opioid Consortium, of which KP Law, uh, law firm that represents the town and many other municipalities was, was a, a leading firm within the Commonwealth. Uh, what we're being presented with now came through the, uh, the Attorney General's office, uh, because the Attorney General and the Commonwealth, as well as Attorneys General, um, I think that's how you say it, um, in other states, uh, banded together, and so this is a, a settlement that relates to the Attorney General. So staff heard from the Commonwealth's Attorney General's office, uh, asking what the town's preference was. We informed them that this was the first we've heard of it, and we presented to the board. So what you're, what we're being asked tonight is if the town wants to, uh, sign on to the Attorney General's settlement, which is the material you have in your packet that talks about frequently asked questions. So this was a settlement that was reached with opioid distributors, as well as the pharmaceutical company known as Johnson &amp; Johnson. So not being sure, because we did not get, uh, any helpful information from the Attorney General's office, other than if you have questions, go to their website. So I did reach out to, uh, John Giorgio, and the salient points of John's response to me was that, um, he does not see any downside in the town's participation in this opioid settlement. Uh, if the town wishes to participate in the settlement being spearheaded by the Attorney General, it is, uh, his recommendation that the town submit to sign participation agreements as soon as possible, and certainly no later than January second, twenty-twenty-two deadline established by the Attorney General. So it is not the, uh, effort that the bor- the board, uh, first contemplated, I think, uh, perhaps five years ago, um, and this is something that every town, city in town in the Commonwealth is being asked if you want to participate.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Julie?
No, I voted in favor of it last time. I thought that we should have joined it five years ago, and so I would certainly, um, propose, I am happy to make the motion after others talked about it.
Sure. Mary?
Um, I'm in favor of it. From what I read, it didn't look like there was any downside, and, and why not?
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, this is a different it, but I, I would agree with you.
I know, but.
Uh, the only, the only thing I'm gonna put out there is that this looks like eighty-five percent of whatever we get is gotta be geared, earmarked towards, uh, some abatement programs, and I'm not sure what those would be, uh, but we could have time to actually figure that out later. I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna hold up getting a reimbursement for something.
Okay. Julie, motion?
Uh, sorry.
Joe, do you have a recommendation, or are you, I'm sorry.
I, I mean, I'd love.
I'm skipping over them.
Sorry, no, I'd love to make a recommendation. I, I just, we didn't get any information, uh, that was held from, from the Attorney General's office, and when they pushed us, we said, we would love to consider this, please give us information. Uh, I can tell you that John informed me today, sorry, Attorney Giorgio, that it's KP's understanding that the Attorney General is proposing that approximately one-third of the settlement funds, which amount in total to five hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars in total, be distributed to municipalities.
House?
And that the remaining two-thirds be retained by the Commonwealth. So again, John has a number of five hundred and thirty-seven thousand in total to be distributed amongst municipalities. I guess what I would say is I don't know that there's a downside to participating, because I don't know that we're gonna see any major windfall.
So there's really no upside?
I, I know we're being questioned by the AG's office, and we want to be good partners with our, um, law enforcement and, and executive branch in the Commonwealth, but.
There's no real cost to us, right?
That's our understanding at this time, correct.
Julie?
So I would, um, make a motion that we, uh, go ahead and execute the, uh, applicable, uh, document for the National Opioid Settlement. Is that adequate for what you need?
I think it's statewide.
Statewide.
State, statewide.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. F is discussion and possible vote to approve new requests for proposal for the sale of West Harwich Schoolhouse. Joe?
So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, I had directed the Assistant Town Administrator, who, uh, has the primary responsibility for procurement, to, uh, validate the question that we had talked about before, and that namely is, uh, can the town sell Five Bell's Neck utilizing, um, the listing process of a Realtor? And, uh, the, uh, the Inspector General's office came back very quickly and said essentially the answer is yes. The potential, nah, not complication, but we would have to first acquire the services of a Realtor by request for proposal. So we would have to go through that process. Uh, and then one of the things that would make it somewhat difficult is, what do they anticipate, uh, being the potential sale value? Because that will impact upon the next RFP. But I guess the bottom-line message right now is, the town may sell this, there was no restriction in the town meeting vote, uh, the town can rely upon, um, the, um, mass listing system, I think it's called, or MLS system, and the use of a Realtor, uh, to either list it and/or listed and show. There just needs to be a little bit more work to be done, and then last but not least, there's nothing that would prevent us from, uh, listing that or advertising that with some level of restriction for historic preservation. So nothing preventing us.
Thank you. I, I think it's time we move on and, and list this building. I mean, I, I would support a restriction, not a restriction, but a preference for a, for a, uh, historical preservation of the facade, preference. Uh, but I do think we should look at all proposals and make our determination after we get the proposals, but I think we should move forward to an RFP to sell the building. Julie?
With MLS, multiple.
With MLS, yeah.
Multiple, thank you.
So what's the, what's the motion have to be? Do we have to hire a Realtor first?
Motion is to, to instruct the Town Administrator to put an RFP out to find a Realtor. That's where we start.
So moved.
Right, Joe?
Yeah, as well as the RFP. So we'll update the RFP and send that back to the board on the property itself, so that the board's comfortable with the language, um, but then we also work with the Realtor to get that going.
So you haven't been seconded yet, just add that link, make a motion with the.
Okay, maybe I should start from scratch. I move that Joe prepare two RFPs, one to obtain a Realtor to sell the, uh, Bell's Neck property, and the second to put out a new RFP for sale of Bell's Neck with a preference for exterior historical preservation. Did I get it all?
You did, yes. Moved and seconded. Discussion, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is not something that I've changed my position on. The issues have changed, but I've all, I've continuously said, when there's a question about what town meeting said, to bring it back to town meeting. I did it with the, uh, Pet Barrow Ground, with the land side, uh, lease, uh, uh, for the harbor. Uh, I think there's confusion, because the explanation says, uh, at the article says, previous efforts to lease this property were not successful. This article would allow the Board of Selectmen to seek requests for proposal for the outright sale of this property in light of recent, uh, interest from several, uh, local groups to acquire the property. I believe in my heart that most people who are voting on this were thinking it was going to land in, in a home, kind of like the South Harwich Meeting House, and I, I, I don't even know that we've got it fleshed out, what the conditions would be for MLS at this point. I mean, we could vote to do it, and that would be fine, but I'm not sure, if, if you put a preference, what does that mean? Especially on a, uh, uh, conveyance from an MLS agent. It's not the same as an RFP, where we can have an analysis done and then waiting factors. I'm not even sure what we'd be doing if we did this tonight. But I would urge us to go back to town meeting and find out what they really wanted to do. They've continuously voted to try to do something for that building, whether it's the roof, the windows, all sorts of things. They were trying to move it at one point to save it. Town meeting has been on record for many years, is not wanting to demolish the building or turn it into something other than what it is.
I'm not there. I think town meeting was clear and said we could sell the building. And I think that, sure, the preference was historical renovations. And we say several groups, there's only one that I remember. And the one that put in their request for proposals, put their bid in, was for a dollar. And I'll say it again, the building's 30 years old. It hasn't been, it's been closed for 30 years, sorry. It's got no real historical value whatsoever inside, other than what it was. Its latest was haunted houses and a youth center with street hockey courts outside. And it's time to move on. And we have talked about this for years and years and years. And there was one group that rallied for it and rallied not to demolish the building at town meeting and made a very compelling argument. But they came up with a bid for a dollar. And they withdrew that bid, by the way. So they're not interested. And they withdrew the bid, and they are canceling their 501(c)(3). So in my mind, it's time to move on. Julie?
Just going back to town meeting, I remember the discussion. And the discussion did talk about the historical nature of the building and all of that. But the warrant article was not amended. Is that correct? I don't recall it being amended. This is what it was. So there was discussion on the historical nature of the building and what would happen, but there was no amendment of the article.
Mary?
I find there's one group, very vocal, that, as we've talked, had that proposal. But anyone else I talked to in town really doesn't care, and is not all that impressed that it's not that fabulous a building. I think the Article 17 is pretty clear, and I say we move on and get the money and move forward.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to continue to debate it, but I'm just saying, the explanation that's in here was our explanation as the Board of Selectmen. And that's where the discussion turned, whatever the, whatever the motion was. I've been through this several times, and I feel very strongly that if something is listed in the warrant, that whatever that is, explanation or not explanation, is part of what the discussion was in history.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Three, one, Joe? All right. Board discussion on the chief's mem, oh, no, we got two other ones, G and H. And on those, I would just take motions.
Okay. I move that we vote to approve a 2022 annual common vicular's license for Dent Donuts, DBA Duncan Donuts, 481 Route 28.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero?
I move that we vote to approve a 2022 Class II and Class IV auto license for Basil Brothers, DBA United Gas, 520 Route 28.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero? Now, board discussion on the chief of police memorandum and possible votes on the show cause hearing process. At the end of our last meeting, the chief, one of the last points was the chief's memo. And that memo is related to the calls and types of calls that the police departments had to respond to. It was, I think it resonated with all of us, so I put it on the agenda for further discussion and added the show cause hearing process, because I have a suggestion on the show cause hearing process. Rather than have the chief reread the memo that he read, that's in the packet, I would just start with board comment on their thoughts on that memo and the position that we're finding ourselves in, in a couple parts of town. And I'll start with Mary.
Okay. I left that hearing just a week ago, pretty disappointed that we were unable to do more than we did. I think I spoke that night that I'm pretty convinced there's some underage drinking, and it won't be too long before we have a tragedy, never mind just something appalling. I'm also kick myself that I didn't spend some time talking to the chief before that night, because his memo certainly gave me a lot more thought. I think we need to do something. This is not the town we need to live in. And I don't know what that is. But the other thing that Michael provided to us were the liquor regs. And there's plenty in those regs that hold disturbance. There's two or three articles that talk about a disturbance. Clearly, we've got disturbances at 1:00 AM in the morning. So I don't know, do we move entertainment back an hour? Do we move drinking back an hour? I think we need a serious conversation about all of those things. I probably have more to say.
We can circle back.
But that's probably, that's probably good for now. How's that?
I allowed for plenty of time for this topic, because I think it's an extremely important topic. Don?
I wish we could solve it tonight, but I mean, this has been going on for the longest time. And I agree with Mary. I've said that I've worked nightclubs myself with a band, and it's, I've seen this stuff happen over and over in different areas of the country. Wish I had an answer for everything, but it does deserve, you know, a lot of discussion, because we can't go on the way we've been going on, that's for sure. Whether it's overpouring, underage drinking, I'm going to give COVID restrictions a break, because that was a peculiar circumstance. But the other things happened regardless of what's going on, and the entertainment, again, don't know what the answer is, but I mean, the one-size-fits-all thing doesn't appeal to me either, because the establishments are located in different overlay districts. There's different configurations, as I mentioned before. The ones on 28 have 150 feet, 150 feet deep. That's the district.
Julie?
Yeah, no, I would agree, and you know, that when she, when you read your memo last week, you know, and I felt, you know, conflicted too, because I think it's a difficult problem to solve. I don't disagree with Mary. Maybe there's an idea there, we somehow meet in the middle and push back the time. But I also felt badly that I didn't want you to feel that we weren't supporting all the hard work you and your officers are doing, because that's certainly not the case. And I know you're working hard at it, as all of the officers are. So, you know, again, I think it's important, this is, we don't need all of the problems cited in his memo. It was kind of disturbing when you really sum it up like that. So I, but I go back to Don's point on the density, which I raised last week as well. And I also go back to, you know, neighbors and businesses trying to become more civil with one another, and the discussions and how to move forward, because I think we can all acknowledge that although we've got these problems that certainly need to be addressed, we also have a new sort of vibe. Maybe it's not, maybe not all those in town like it, but I know many who do. And it's helping the businesses make their business for a couple months out of the year. So I appreciate the difficulties that we're facing, and I agree that they need to be addressed. I think somewhere in there, it's a negotiation, it's everybody has to give up a little bit of something to provide less of the chaos that's happening later in the evening, and to help the neighbors continue to live in their settings, which I understand many of them have, we received an email from Bob.
Go ahead.
You know, many of them have lived there for years prior to this outdoor music. But it's also created a different type of downtown, and I think some of that is good. It's not all bad. But I think somewhere in there, we, as a board, the businesses and the neighbors need to work collectively together to ease the burden that we're putting on our police department. And to your point, Mary, about, you know, a tragedy, at some point, it's a math equation, you know, something's going to happen. So we don't want that. So I'm open to other ideas that the board has moving forward. But I certainly want to say to the chief that we really appreciate the hard work that you have done and your officers have done.
Mary?
One thing I think we should do away with, and it, you can't make it throughout town, but the amplified outside music, one of the people that spoke, I think it might have been Mr. Ganley, that was a game changer. That's what really made the people in back of all the restaurants go crazy, was the amplified outside. So my thought is downtown Harwich Port, and maybe the SEAL, because they're kind of in a neighborhood too, I don't know that there's anyone else around them, no outside amplified music. They have acoustic or recorded, whatever happened to nice, soft dinner music? I don't know. I'm showing my 71 years, I guess.
I will start either with Town Administrator or the chief, depending on which one wants to go first. We had a fairly broad discussion on this today, in preparation for tonight's meeting, and future agenda items, and future trainings. Chief, your memo, you know, it's not listed in here the geography of where these complaints came from, but noise from outside entertainment has been a huge one for this town for the past few years. We've been, we've been wrestling with this. I have supported outside entertainment from its inception. I think it's been good for Harwich Port and bringing a lot of business to town. I think sometimes to my detriment from some of the neighbors that don't like my support on that. But certainly, we could pick when we permitted these bans at these restaurants in Harwich Port. And I'm specifically going to speak to Harwich Port right now. But you could basically pick when the complaints started to come in, is when we permitted these. And I don't think anyone really can dispute those facts. Prior to that, we didn't get noise complaints, and we didn't have a lot of this. Noise from inside entertainment, not as huge a problem for me. Certainly, I think that there's those who are kind of waiting for some disturbances, and I think that some of the language that we have in our regulations, and I spoke to you about this today, noise not to exceed the premises. Some of our businesses in Harwich Port are on the sidewalk. So a police officer standing on the sidewalk and somebody opens a door, you're certainly going to hear a conversation at one of those bars where they open the doors. Disturbances, unruly crowds in the street at closing time. You come through Harwich Port, it's not the best lit place on Cape Cod. And if you come through Harwich Port when these bars are closing, it is running the gauntlet, and somebody is going to get struck by a car. Some of the bars have increased following patrons outside, and I think it's helped to get rid of some of the crowd. But there's certainly not, it's not like a lot of other towns where they're not, people aren't standing on Route 28, pushing and shoving each other and being drunk in the middle of the street. Crowd noise, we're inviting these people to our town, so there's going to be an expectation of a certain amount of crowd noise. Unruly patrons, I guess alcohol and intoxicated patrons. So intoxicated and unruly can probably be together. Fighting, alcohol also. Public urination, intoxicated patron causing damage to a property, intoxicated patron found sleeping in someone else's vehicle. Intoxicated underage patron found sleeping in someone else's house. Underage drinking, employees drinking in establishments after hours and leaving premises with open containers. Now, there's lawyers that will dispute all this and say, didn't happen at my client's restaurant, and employees, and people that will say it didn't happen. The calls aren't just being made up, I wouldn't think, all of them. And certainly based on last week, I think that this board was very fair in its rulings, and where there was finding of facts, we ruled, and where there wasn't, we didn't. And some residents were very upset about that. Our conversation today was about moving forward, not looking backwards. And this initial discussion with the board is about looking forward, not looking backwards, and continually trying to improve our processes, how we enforce things, how we keep the public safe, how we keep the neighbors from not saying that we're ruining their quality of life, and how we can continue to support the businesses. Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to ever get the cooperation and communication that Selectman Kavanaugh spoke of, because I think in some instances, it's too late. How do you, how do you, what do you need, chief? And what are your suggestions and some of your thoughts on the liquor regulations outside of the 150-foot, I heard a noise, or plainly audible, where we're having your police officers go to a location and measure distance? Liquor regulations have a lot of clear and concise things about nuisances in there. And with that, I'll turn that, I guess I'm going to skip Joe and go right to you, because you're standing up.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the support. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this. It is very concerning to me, especially as I alluded to last week with the staffing shortage that I have looming on the horizon, actually existing now, it's going to get worse. So I, I'm glad we can all agree that I think we have, we have an issue. We can, I know the actual bulleted item on the agenda is the hearing process, so I would like to comment on that. You mentioned the liquor regulations, Mr. Chair, and I think that's a perfect place to start. I think that if everyone, the business owners, the board, the Town Administrator, the police department, all agreed that we're operating off of this document right here, that would be a huge start. Because as Selectman Anderson said, everything is in here, everything. So we don't need to talk about the noise bylaw, because noise is in here, related to entertainment and liquor establishments, both. Entertainment and, you know, a liquor establishment becoming a public nuisance.
And just for the record, that's the document that you were all emailing today.
Right.
The liquor regs.
Harwich Port Selectment Liquor License Regulations. So if we all operated off of this, and as per our discussion this morning, I think I may have already said, we've agreed at the PD to additional training on these. We've been, we've been training on them for a number of years already. We still have a ways to go. But I think if we can do some in-house training and potentially bring in an outside attorney who is, who is very well-versed with how these regulations are written, and, you know, I think that would be a big step forward.
And just for the record, the conversation about that happened this morning, outside counsel. And right now, our outside counsel, and another word that was used in the hearings, was our prosecutor. So the person that's going to defend the town on their liquor regulations, whomever the board decides to have be their prosecutor on the instances, is who we're going to have come in and train the police officers. Mary, to your point, last week, some of the things that we didn't think we had enough evidence to find a guilty on the alleged violation, we're going to bring in our prosecutor so that he can outline to the police officers and the police chief, based on our regulations, what's rightable, what's not rightable, and what they should be doing from the time the complaint comes in until the time it gets before the hearing officer or the Board of Selectmen.
Bearing in mind, there are some situations, such as underage drinking, such as over-service, that are harder for a uniformed police officer to uncover. And that, we could also enlist the assistance of the ABCC. I mean, I was thinking, driving in this evening, that there wouldn't be anything wrong with the town reaching out, or me reaching out to the ABCC, and seeing if we can get a commitment for them to do three compliance checks a month, or something like that. You know what I mean? Or some, some number of compliance checks a month, not just a one and done, but a consistent compliance check for over-service and underage drinking, false IDs, that type of thing. And leaving with open containers, it's also easier to pick up if you have plainclothes. As I mentioned this morning, I really, I would love to, if I had a detective unit with eight officers in it, eight detectives, we could probably shake loose a couple plainclothes people on the weekends to try and go around to each establishment and see if we could uncover over-service or underage drinking. Because we are all sworn in as agents of the local licensing authority. So we have the same authority as an ABCC agent, as it comes to the liquor regulations. But I don't have that. I don't have that luxury. So I think the regulations are, is a good place to start. And as far as the hearing process goes, a...
Let me jump in here real quick. Don, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Your first comment was, everything is in there. And the only thing that I have a problem with, it's not in here. It's not in the packet. Can we make sure it gets in the packet next week?
Yeah.
In two weeks.
I believe our liquor regulations are on our website, but I will put...
No, I just want to make sure everybody has the same focus on this that we got, because we got an email with it.
Sure. On the, on the hearing process, one thing that we discussed this morning was, in some instances on these memorandums that we're getting from the police, last year, we told the police chief that we wanted to know about everything. And the police department created a memo and the paper trail for all of the incidents that happened in Harwich Port. Rather than continue to inundate the board with memorandums that often go into the packet that we're voting to have a hearing on, I think it makes more sense to me, certainly by vote of the board, to have the police chief determine which ones would require a hearing and which ones wouldn't. The other memos would be for keeping us apprised of what's going on as a local licensing authority. But take the burden away from the board in its initial step and have the police chief give us a memorandum stating that this one should be looked at for a hearing, then the board would vote whether or not it needs to have a hearing.
Right. If I may, Mr. Chair, yes, the board actually has to determine whether there's going to be a public hearing, but I could certainly submit a memo with that recommendation, that you should look carefully at this situation, as I think it warrants a public hearing. And then you would make the final decision on that. So I have no problem with that.
The intent really is to get the ones out of the packet and putting another line item on our agenda that doesn't require a hearing, or just automatically assuming everything needs a hearing. And part of this is based on the amount of resources that are being used. And the second part of the police chief's memo speaks about his officers overtime on every one of these hearings. It doesn't take into account town resources, Jeff Blake, the attorney, other attorneys that we're now using for other things, lawsuits. It doesn't take into account the amount of time taken out of our town administrator's day, having hearings, and the rest of our staff. So I think the chief making the decision to send it to the board with an asterisk on it or whatever, that this one probably should have a hearing, and having the vote, vote that makes more sense than what we've been doing.
If I could just add, Mr. Chairman, also, I think it's also important, though, like, this year unlike any other, this past season unlike any other, you saw the big picture. Okay? So you have a full flavor of how many different incidents, how many times, you know, how many memos came across. I think it's important for the board, as a licensing authority, to actually have that information. I can submit it as an advisory, or a brief, or whatever. I can submit it as, as an advisory, or a brief, or whatever you would, whatever format you would like, but I think it's important that it be available to the board to, to get a full picture of the totality of the circumstances, as it were, related to the different establishments. Because some pop up quite obviously, like, you know, very frequently. And if you look at the totality of the circumstances, have they become a public nuisance? It's not really much of a jump to say that, considering some of the issues we've dealt with at certain establishments, so...
Mary?
Can I just clarify that, Chief? So what are, are you suggesting that you would send us information on all of the incidents, but just highlight those that you would recommend a hearing? Is that correct?
Yes.
So we still see the totality?
Yes, that would be my, my suggestion. I have, I have no problem, as long as, as the board doesn't, and the town administrator doesn't, I have no problem with making the recommendation and then sending the rest as, you should be aware of this, but also you being aware that you can say, "Whoa, timeout. I think this one should go to a hearing. I disagree, Chief." So, right?
Well, and I think that, that, like any other subject, if a board member gets a memo and thinks that it should be on the agenda, all they have to do is request it to the chair, whoever the chair may be, and they'll put it on the agenda, like anything else. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would like to say, for your officers, for you, and for us and the public, that it served a purpose to do what we did this year. I, I know that we don't want to do this forever, the way we were doing it, but that last hearing, and seeing all of the license holders sitting in the room, they had to have gotten the message that we're approaching this differently, because the situation is different. The situation has grown beyond what we were doing, and we're paying attention. And we're paying attention in a way that everybody who held a license saw as they were seeing the other license holders be dealt with. I could see throttling back, but I mean, I thought it was useful to do what we did, because the complexity of what's going on has gotten much greater than it was like five or 10 years ago.
Don, and I agree, I agree 100%. I just, I, there was a great amount of frustration at the end of that meeting, I think, with some of the non-finding of facts and not moving forward with some of the things. And I, I just don't want to get, continue to waste everybody's time if, if we don't have the findings of fact. So one memo that I think stands out, maybe it was a police report, maybe not related to ours, somebody left a bar, rolled their car over and hit a telephone pole, and, and then said they were at a certain bar. Well, if we don't investigate that, why would we have a hearing on it? And why would we take the town administrator's time and the police officer's time? But if it's not investigated, and we can't prove that they left that bar, and that was where they were over-served, or their last drink, I just want to avoid hearings that we don't have to have. That's my only, my only suggestion to the board. The board can go any way they want, but I think the chief and the, and the hearing officer, it's, it's important to note, we've appointed Joe as our hearing officer. We don't have to. We can do these at this meeting. We can schedule our hearings anytime we want. We can take the hearing officer right out of it. Because we've had a hearing officer, he doesn't read these memos. He doesn't read the cases. He doesn't read the finding of facts until we refer it to him, so that his eyes are clean when he puts them on the piece of paper. But we could change that part of the process, too. I would just like to streamline the amount of hearings and make sure that we have a case before we have a hearing. Just having a hearing with the town administrator, then come before the licensing authority and have the finding of facts be not guilty, I don't see where there's any teeth in that at all.
The other thing I'd like to see us is do those hearings quicker. So in some of the cases where there were, by the time we got to it, there were four events. And I know that's hard, because some of those events were a week after one another. But I think anything we could do, and maybe by having less, we could do the hearings quicker. I think it has more teeth if it's quick, and then the second one comes in clearly as a second offense.
Julie?
So, and I agree with that, Mary. I think that's an important piece, and I get the timing of some of these issues. But I also think, as we talk about collectively, how to move forward, because we can't go back, and we want to make things better. But we are responsible overall. But I think that we, not only do we need to look forward in how we address the issues, but we, we need to also, I think, find ourselves at a table with all of the partners that we're talking about. I don't think we can just simply sit here about hearings. I think we need to be part of the conversation of how this gets better, and I see that as a joint type of meeting facilitated with businesses, with neighbors, with the board, with the police. Because it's a dialogue, and if we don't have that dialogue, and to your point, maybe it is too late, but maybe it's not, or maybe it's a new conversation, because we do need to, we do need to address the issues we're having in town, and we do need to make sure the businesses, license holders know that, you know, it is up to us on how this is going to proceed, but they're part of that. You know, the businesses are part of it, the neighbors are part of it, we're a part of it, the police are part of it. And unless we at least have an attempt at a, an all-inclusive conversation, you know, I don't, I do think that it's a lost cause, in the sense of then we're just back to hearings. I think we at least need to try to have something different to have that conversation. Maybe we, maybe we make some headway, maybe we don't, but it's, there's no harm in having it.
Agreed. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it at this point. There is a thread with this conversation we haven't pursued, and I think it, it's also one of the stakeholders, like the harbor master. The situation with Brax and the license holder who is actually at the harbor has to be addressed somehow so that we can resolve how anybody can police people just taking stuff to a boat or sitting on the deck overlooking the harbor, but that's off-premises for, for Brax, for sure. That worried me when we, when we started talking about. By extension, I'm not sure if anybody's got a real handle on that situation, and I'd love to see that resolved before the summer starts again.
You know, Julie, I thought that's a great point. But I would just point out, just item J on tonight's agenda, new business, happens to be what we're talking about. Discussion and possible vote on entertainment licenses, times and locations. We received one email today, which will be in the packet next week. It's too late to get in the packet today, but for correspondence and those in the room that might want it, will be in next week's packet under correspondence. We have one resident in the room that's been part of this from the beginning, a few years ago when it blew up. We have one attorney from, from two establishments, and we have one other resident in the back row who seems interested in this topic, or he wouldn't be here. Where are the businesses? We're talking about their entertainment licenses. We're talking about rolling back times. We're talking about, we're having an in-depth conversation, and it's a properly-agended item. Where are they?
I don't know. I don't disagree with them.
Where are they? And, and I'm not sure we had full attendance at the, at the annual license meeting this year. I think we might have, where ABCC comes down, and the police chief holds a hearing at the, at the issuance of the beginning of the season. But, I don't know. If my entertainment was being talked about tonight, I think I'd probably be in the room or have somebody in the room for me, but... I'd certainly be willing to try anything and take any suggestions, but I think it starts with the other side of the aisle, which would be the business owners, and, and to me specifically, the ones that are constantly having hearings, or the complaints, you know, which is a handful of businesses. Chief, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, it just popped into my mind, you said that, Mr. Chair, is if you look in the regulations, you talk about the business owners, it puts an awful lot of onus on the business owners in those regulations. Actions that they shall take, actions that they are strongly recommended to take, addressing all of these issues that I bulleted out in my memo. It's all in there.
Thank you, Chief. And I would, I would note that we're not seeing this, at least I don't see this. I know the town of Orleans is taking up, trying to get cohabitation and outdoor entertainment with its residents right now. They're having public hearings and public meetings to try and determine how they're all going to coexist. No decisions have been made yet. But we're not seeing this in the newspapers from other towns and other businesses. And I, I frequent bars in other towns, and, and it's a very different, seems like a very different atmosphere and a different, different process, but hopefully we can get there. Chief, if you're done...
I am, thank you.
Town administrator, anything to add?
Very briefly, because I think the way this conversation went tonight was exactly how it should go, that if somebody's watching this, you're going to see a lengthy conversation amongst the members of the local licensing authority and your chief of police, and very little from me, and that's the way it should be. Meaning, when you read the regulations, it talks about local licensing authority, you folks wrote, it talks about the police, and the police chief wrote, and in three instances, it talks about the town administrator. And so, as the chairman said, you can, you can send these matters to me, but the point I would bear out tonight is one that's already been said, but is worth repeating. I have said at other meetings of the local licensing authority, I've said it at other hearings that I have presided over in the short term, the town of Harwich has very well-defined and solid regulations. And the chief, in our conversation this morning, used a phrase that I haven't heard in a while, but absolutely makes sense, that if the town and the establishments work within the four corners of the regulations, I think we'd be better off going forward. And so our focus going forward should be on the regulations. And the only other party, if you will, that isn't represented tonight, but that we've referenced, is that when the chief and his staff find something that they believe to be a violation, they should work with council to articulate any number of potential charges that could be levied, and that's where the regulations come in. Because it wouldn't just be that if there was, you know, any of the allegations types that the chief has, but if the establishment is found to be thwarting the investigation of the town, it says right in the regulations that thwarting an investigation is a violation. And so that if we, if we do as we've talked about, if we rely upon our regulations, and if the town can rely upon your council, you know, to, to look at it in that broader manner, then I think things will, will change for the better.
Thank you. Follow-up from the board, Julie?
Well, again, I would just say, to your point, you know, there's many that, that aren't at our meetings, but there's a lot of people that should be at our meetings on a weekly basis that aren't here either. So I think it's a valid point, but I think that the one thing, and I know you and I have talked about it in the past, is, you know, at least if you understand that we have proactively put it out there, like, come to the meeting, or let's organize a meeting, so that we can have this conversation to review the regulations, to educate. We shouldn't have to, I understand that, but if we do it to be proactive, to move forward in a better fashion for our town, then ultimately, don't come back and say, "Well, I didn't know," or play dumb, or, you know, or just basically thumb your nose at us. So if we at least can say, "We've reached out, this is what we're doing." I like the chief's idea of, you know, ABCC coming in and doing something monthly, a couple of times a month, you know, that's a crackdown that those businesses are responsible for doing that. We're not responsible for it. But that sends a real message, and if we roll back time, if we get rid of amplification. I mean, those are messages that we can send, but to the chief's point, to your point, Michael, they are in charge of their business, and the liability lies with them. So I'm just saying that I think it's a conversation that we should have, so no one can say you didn't, you, the board didn't try to work with us, because we're trying to make a living, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate how hard these people work at trying to make a living, and trying to make that living in two to three months. It's not easy. But at the same time, they have a responsibility to their businesses, to their clientele, and to this board, that, that's a real responsibility. So if we can work together to make it better, that's what we should do. If they're not willing to do that, then, then that result will be stricter hearings, stricter enforcement of regulations. And I, and I think all of those things do need to be addressed, and I agree with Dawn. I mean, before the summer, you know, like, let's get on it, so...
You're hovering. I'm not, I'm not ready, I'm not ready for you yet, Cindy. But I will, I will call on you when I am.
Thank you.
Further follow-up from the board, Mary?
So what are you suggesting, Julie? That we make it an agenda item for another meeting and send out handwritten invitations to everybody? This is your chance to say your piece?
Well, I think that it could either be a meeting here, a public meeting, part of our agenda, or it could be a separate meeting that we have with businesses, and I don't want me to put Cindy on the spot, but maybe she could facilitate that meeting and, and a time. She's laughing back there, so she's...
I was hovering.
You were hovering. And again, I, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I see it as either an agenda item, that everybody's informed by mail, by, you know, that we do everything, you know, do it by mail, do it by email, whatever. But, or it could be a separate meeting. I, I almost think it should be a separate meeting, because more time can be devoted to it, so...
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that's kind of the answer that I would have given, but one more thing, just note to the board, when you're not actually coming to these meetings routinely and looking up the agenda, there are really not, it's not a hot topic for you to turn to the legals and say, "Oh, they're, they're doing this, this week." Our, our meetings are not at the top of the invite list for most people, so I'm not sure if they know that we were discussing this, and it would be shame on them if we do hold that meeting and they don't show up, because it's on them.
But the proper notification, I, I don't think anyone can say, "I didn't get the memo," right? So...
That's why I'm actually very supportive of that, because there's, there is no excuse then. It's not like I don't follow the agendas of the board of Selectmen.
Well, I would argue that it's incumbent upon them to follow the agenda, because there's a simple tab on our website, thank you, Caleb, that you check on a box on whatever committee you're interested in, knowing what's going on, and it automatically emails you the agenda. And you can scan through the agenda in about three seconds and, and see that entertainment licenses are on them. Before I go to the public, I would say there's two more topics, and, and could be future brief conversation now, future agenda item. Chief, actually, I'll pick on Joe this time first. Joe, this was something that came up in, in a conversation, and I can't remember when, but, and I believe it was out of you, that on these licenses, they're signed by, or the owners, or whoever they designate as sign manager of record. So there's a manager on these licenses. So as we have these hearings and whatnot, is it, does it make sense, and can we add into our regulations that the manager of record be present for the hearing? And not, not in case the local licensing authority wants to question them? And I'll just think of one hearing that was an utter mess entirely, but we heard from absolutely everybody except for, for the manager of record. So is that something that we want to consider adding to the regulation?
So, speaking as a non-attorney, who has been your hearing officer on many occasions, I would argue, absent town council telling me we're wrong, that the ABCC application has significant amount of time devoted to who is going to be the manager of record, background information on that person, query background or criminal background check on that person. And that's because, through my ABCC training over the years, the ABCC looks to that person to be the representative of the establishment. So anyone that's being offered as a record of manager has to have a strong background, good background, to pass muster, and is also the person that the local licensing authority could and should rely upon, with the, with the benefit of council for sure, just as the board is benefit for council, but to hear from the manager of record.
Thank you. Is it okay with the board if Joe gets a legal opinion on that, so that we have it? And then our future, future agenda item?
I'm not sure what you're suggesting.
Whoever's responsible for the license, attend our hearings.
Has to be at the hearing.
Yeah.
And what happens if, like, we had one instance, the owner said he had it on the wrong date on his calendar? So what happens to that?
I would say it's probably a violation at this point, but I would say that the board at any point could vote an exception based, based on extenuating circumstances. But certainly, we're all humans, and if there's a circumstance where they can't, then we would take that up and have a conversation and rule one way or another. But forgetting a, a date, I don't, I don't think that that's acceptable. That wouldn't, for me, wouldn't fly. Chief?
Mr. Chair, there is, there is a clause in here somewhere, I can't find it immediately, but it does mention that, that they, I'm not sure it's an absolute requirement, but I, I think that's how it read. I just saw it not too long ago, I'll try and find it.
I'd like to vet that and then get the opinion on that added, if it's not in there. Chief, you can stay up, because maybe you know more about this than I do, but some towns, I know one that's fairly close to us, have, have a compliance group. And a compliance group is something that I think that this local licensing authority should consider putting together. And I think the compliance group that I'm thinking about would be the police chief, the fire chief, or designee, or the health, building commissioner, and anyone else we wanted to put around, put on it, that could at any point go do a compliance inspection on any, any restaurant, any bar, any, any business.
Yes. Yes. And that came up at our, our staff meeting last week, when we were discussing this topic, and I believe when we first tried to follow the model, it was the town of Yarmouth that does it. But specifically from our staff meeting, it was brought up that we could probably, that, that capacity at some of these places is what's directly related to the amount of noise. So, capacity is going to require that group, the inclusion of the fire department. And I've already spoken with the fire chief, and he is more than willing to join us and whoever else in a group of compliant, for compliance checks at varying times throughout the season. So, you know, addressing capacity, which is, from what I understand, a fairly serious violation even for a first offense, would be another big step forward, probably in limiting the noise.
Thank you, chief. So, I will put that on for a future agenda item, near future, because I think we've got to sift all this out by opening of the season again. But thank you for that, chief, and I'll, I'll look for a direction from you as I put that agenda item together. My only message to anyone that's listening, or anyone that watches, is that we're not anti-business, we're very pro-business, actually, and I think if you go back, this board and previous boards over the past few years have done everything they can to be as pro-business as possible. And we've gotten ourselves, as mentioned in the past, to a point where we have some problems that we need to fix, and it's costing the town a lot of money. And, and I don't think now's the time to let off on the gas pedal, and hopefully, we can all coexist, and hopefully, we can, we can get past this, but we are still a very pro-business community. But having residents stand before us, whether some think it's just a few whining, saying that their quality of life is being disturbed, is something that we're obligated to take up, we're obligated to work on, and we're obligated to try and fix. Now, public, and we'll start with Cindy. Just state your name for the, name and position for the record.
In case no one knows me, right? Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. We do annually, with the police and the restaurants, a wonderful program, and I sit in on it every year. It's in April, the restaurants are involved, but I think if we could do something, and I'm volunteering myself and the chief once again on stuff, but as you've all said, we need everyone in the room. Well, we talked earlier about a room, and maybe we use the gym, but it would be a good idea to have everyone together. You know, we all just got through COVID, going through all kinds of things, reopening, businesses are trying to recreate themselves, but we all do need to sit together, and everyone needs to hear what is going on. And the chief brought up, great point, it starts with the liquor regulations, it's all right there. We all get it, I've read through it every year, all the restaurants and businesses get it. So, if we could start there, I'd be more than happy to put out an email and do like we do when we get ready for the April meeting. But maybe this is, you know, we're getting ready to go into budgets and everything else with all of you and the town, but I don't know how many days there are till town meeting.
Hundred and thirty-three.
But maybe we do something in March, because we're going to be going right into it in April with all the restaurants in the police station. So, I can work with the chief and Katie or whoever, and we can get something put together. But I think, I think if they knew, and, you know, maybe I should have reached out and said, "Oh, guys, guess what, we're all going to be talking about..." To be honest, I was really concerned about getting you guys the resolution for the cultural districts tonight. But yes, we can definitely put something together, and I'd be more than happy to do that, because as I've said to the public many a times, we are very fortunate that we are all here for all of our seven villages and for all of our businesses, you know? Earlier tonight, I told everybody about what they all came together and did for the family pantry. You know, everyone wants to be here, wants to be in Harwich, we all want to work together too, so I'd be more than happy to help you with this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bob Nickerson, Harwich Port. First off, it's quite interesting, I really appreciate your reaction to last week's meeting, because almost half of those points are in my memo. I was very upset with how it all turned out and how it went, and really upset with what the chief had to tell us about, which you had to prelude, prelude to, because obviously, you got those memos trickling in over time, but then he summarized them up, and then it really shows up in your face. You know, I have them here, and I'm not going to read them again, because Michael has already read them, and we all read them probably more than one time, but I am going to just give you a couple of things I had thought about. I'm not going to talk very long, because you hit a lot of my points, but one of the things, because I did read the liquor regulations, I watched the whole thing again, and I watched, and I was here for most of it, and I read the hearing notes, all in details. So, I was a little taken back in the fact that when the officer actually was at 400 feet, that wasn't a violation because of 950 and all that. I don't want to get into that detail, it just confused me why that wasn't a violation. So, I don't want to really drill down on that so much, but what I want to do is suggest one thing, is maybe we should require, require security personnel at these venues, that's in the regulations, right? Maybe we need somebody to be there watching out for them and what's going on, right? So, think about that. The other thing is, I thought, additional budget for the Harwich Police, excuse me, Police Department, so they can either have more officers on the street, but then, interestingly enough, I say, can we develop a brief course to assist the, assist the officer in collecting data that will be acceptable at future hearings by the hearing officer, which you're already targeting? So, really, I'm coming up here now, when I thought I might be arguing with you, I'm applauding you that you're really trying to go down the right road, I think, in getting this done. And this whole idea of interaction with the venues sounds great, but for somebody that went to every hearing, every noise hearing committee, when there was not that kind of action, and that small amount of, couple of people that were venues, a couple that were not, I'm not so quite sure you're going to get, Julie, what you want out of it. I'm not saying you shouldn't try, but I think the smartest thing to do is what the chief has already said, and that is, look at the, the regulations, hold them to the regulations, make sure they look at them, they are tough, for sure, when you start reading them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on. Next up, discussion and possible vote to approve the following 2022 entertainment licenses. So, we have a total of seven on the agenda tonight. These are all annuals. I believe they're all annuals. And I had Danielle put in bold, the, what they had last year. So, what you see that's not bold is what's been requested, and what you see in bold is what they had last year. So, in some instances, they're looking to change them, in some, they're not. Preference of the board, Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this has been universal, I've been doing this since before Mary and Julie were here. I've been trying to head towards acoustic outdoors along the Harwich Port Strip, so I personally would like to take the Lanyard Bar and Grill off, until we can actually ask them to come in, because I would like to impose the same thing, it's part of the same strip of Route 28.
Why don't we start with one, and then we'll get into that? The only argument, I, I have an argument for that, Dawn.
Okay.
But why don't we start with number one, and then if somebody wants to read a motion...
Let me make motions on them, and then we can go?
And then we can...
I move that we approve...
Why don't we discuss it first, so we're not adding or subtracting things from motions? So, I'll go to discussion on, on the first one, which is Blue Stripe LLC, and they are looking for weekday, 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. inside, and Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. inside, recorded or live music with amplification. In 2021, they had 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. inside, live or recorded music, doesn't say, doesn't say with amplification, but this is an indoor-only request, and they're going back an hour. Any discussion from the board, Dawn?
No, just my general thought, which is, I'm not willing to vote for anything that's more than what it was.
Mary?
I'm good with this, because it's inside, and I've never heard any complaints about noise coming from the Cape's, Cape Sea Grill.
Julie?
So, when I'm reading this, it looks to me like they're adding Sunday, 1 to 11 inside. They didn't have that last year. It says weekday, 11 to, 11 a.m. to 12 a.m. inside, but it does not say Sunday.
You are correct. Let's just see on the matrix. Sunday inside, yes, so they are adding Sunday, inside.
Right.
Which I don't have a problem with. I think there's a reason some of these apply, which I know with, I believe it was the port last year, we talked about ambient background music, and we all conceded that ambient background music was okay and not entertainment, but I think if it's recorded music, it might, might require an entertainment license. But even if they had a band on Sunday inside, does the board have a problem with that? Can I get a motion on that one?
I move that we...
Go ahead.
Just before you make motions, based on the discussion you were having, that establishment's Sunday entertainment license application, they've checked off renewal, and so I think they may have imagined, or they may believe that they've had it in a prior year. The question I would have to ask for town council is, does that constitute a new application that requires a hearing or a different process under Chapter 140?
Okay, let's vote it without Sunday, and we'll go back to the applicant and say, "Check the wrong box," and if they want to, we'll figure out the process, Joe, in the meantime.
So, the motion is going to be without Sunday?
Acceptable. The way I'm hearing it from Joe is, there's no other option, so.
Okay. I move that we approve the following 2022 entertainment license for Blue Stripe LLC, DBA Cape Sea Grill, 31 C Street, weekday, 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. inside.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Dawn, are you an aye?
I'm, I'm an aye for that, it's not...
Okay, 4-0, Joe?
Thank you.
Okay, Ember Pizza Inc., DBA Ember, 600 Route 28, weekday, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. inside, and 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside. Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. inside, and 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside. Entertainment type, concert, recorded or live music with amplification. 2021 license was weekday, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. inside, and 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside. Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. inside, and 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside. Entertainment last year, type, live or recorded music with amplification inside, and unamplified recorded or live acoustic music only outside. So, they're looking for amplified outside, adding amplified to outside, and then time-wise, it looks like we're going, there's 10, and last year, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. inside.
So, they dropped an hour there.
Yep. No, no, so, yeah, so they're dropping an hour, they're going to 10:00 a.m. 10:00 a.m. during the week from 11:00 a.m.
How else the other way?
The other way.
Oh, yeah, that's right, they're going up, that's right, they're going up an hour, yep. So, the biggest difference that I see is the amplification, live or recorded music with amplification
But they're adding...
versus acoustic only.
They're adding on Sunday.
And Sunday, Julie, show me what they're adding, I'm losing my eyes right now.
So, Sunday, they're going for 1:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. inside, and 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside, right?
Yep.
And here, it says, last year, Sunday was 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. inside, and 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside.
Okay.
So, it's increasing, right?
Yep.
Right, right.
And putting live, I mean, recorded music outside again.
Outside is increasing.
All right, so they're trying to go, instead of 1:00 p.m., they're going to 6, instead of 6:00 p.m., they're going to 1:00 p.m.
Right.
On Sunday.
Right.
Outside. Comments from the board? Mary?
I'm less disturbed by the times, but I'd certainly be interested in hearing what the rest of you have to say, but I'm very much against amplification outside.
Dawn?
Having been involved in that original discussion, I'd be willing to renew it under the same terms and conditions as last year, but not, same as I'm saying about everybody else on Route 28. I, I'll vote no for anything that increases either the hours or amplification.
Julie?
Based on the discussion we've had tonight, I feel the same way, I don't really want to add hours, especially while we're trying to figure out how to move forward, and I, I do feel that the amplification has been a, an issue, but I, I don't know how we, you know, we do need to address it for the season, I guess, is my point, and so I don't really know that we get to address the amplification tonight, but I do think it needs to be addressed. So, if we, if we go forward with this tonight, allowing amplified, how do we, how do we address that later?
And then, so amplification, I hear you 100%, Dawn, has another issue, which is times.
The increase.
The increase in times, from 1:00 p.m., from 6:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Sunday.
Right.
Anything else? Mary?
No, I, I guess I, I could be swayed to Dawn's way of thinking that we shouldn't increase the hours either, so keep last year's hours and no amplification for outside would be what I think we should do.
One second for the audience. I just got to wrap my head around something. Okay, you're up. Name for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ray Tomlinson, on behalf of the licensee, Ember Pizza Inc. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, the time issue with respect to this year's renewal application is simply to conform to the hours of operation. So, under the, the entertainment license is necessary to even operate a television, and so if we aren't able to have an entertainment license that conforms to the hours of operation, that means that you simply can't even play a game inside at a restaurant without having an entertainment license at that time. And so, the conformity is, for the hour change, is related to conforming to the hours of the operation. You'll note also that the change in time for amplified music outside, Ember has had no noise violations in the past two years, and in light of the ongoing litigation, I would suggest that there's either an acoustic limitation at all licensed establishments, or there's not. And the noise bylaw, which governs, which is tied to entertainment licenses, makes no distinction between whether or not it's acoustic or not acoustic. And so, I'm simply here to suggest to the board that it should consider, if it's going to impose a noise restriction solely on Ember, how that's going to affect the future status of every licensee in this town, and the further legal proceedings that will arise out of that. That's all I have to add.
Thank you. All right, I'm not, I'm not as, amplification, I'm 100% on board. No amplification, amplification, I'm not, and I hear what Attorney Tomlinson's saying about hours of operation. I think, as we read through those regulations today, chief and town administrator, I'm not sure we came to the same conclusion that a television set needs an entertainment license, or a, or ambient background. I'm not sure we came up with that determination, but I guess that would take a legal definition, right? Attorney Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If there's going to be a policy exception by the board, I would simply suggest that that be, you know, codified, either in the noise law or the entertainment license itself, because the licensees, I'm speaking for myself, I'm speaking for Ember and Port and for Brax, the general interpretation of the entertainment license is that it applies to... The general interpretation of the entertainment license is that it applies to any form of entertainment, that includes television. And without an entertainment, with a licensed establishment, without an entertainment license cannot offer anti-entertainment, and that includes even televised sporting events. And so you're prohibiting, by, by not conforming the entertainment license to the hours of operation, you're inherently limiting the licensed establishment's opportunity to be able to offer televised sporting events and, and quite frankly arbitrarily allowing that at other establishments. So I believe that there needs to be either a written policy decision that is written into the liquor license regs that either exempts ambient background noise, because I can tell you that next door to the port, Cape Seagrill, they do have ambient, uh, recorded music that's amplified outside. And they, as we know, don't have an entertainment license for outside. And so this, this difference in how the entertainment license is being applied to different licensees is not uniform, and that creates a problem for the town.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we're talking, what I was speaking of was a policy decision. I'm, I'm saying clarification on what we have. We're not, we're not sure that a, I'm not sure. And, and I certainly won't rely on the applicant's counsel to clarify that for me. I'm not sure the television set is in the entertainment license, based on the way, isn't, needed for an entertainment license, based on the way that reads. That's my comment, based on reading it this morning. Or ambient background music. And what Cape Seagrill does, amplifying outside, we've never got a complaint. So I don't know that, and I'm not taking your word for that.
I appreciate that.
So certainly it isn't this board's intention, despite what some think, to issue things differently. And I do appreciate your comment that Ember hasn't had a noise violation in two years, because I recognize that and it was a very good summer there. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does anybody have any recollection of us ever violating somebody for having a television set on without an entertainment license?
I do not. Let's get back to this, because I don't want to get off track.
I'd be willing to bend on the times.
So I'm okay with times and I, and I certainly understand the argument. But I would refer to the, a board member to make a motion, but we'll start with Julie with her comments. I will get to you in a minute. I recognize you.
I, I just want to say that I don't have a problem with the times, but I'm just pointing out where there were differences from, from the previous year. And, and the only other thing I would say to Mary's point on amplification is, I specifically would have no problem with that change in times if there's no amplification. My only question, and, and again, that would not be only to Ember, that would be to any amplification of music. But my question is, do we make those calls now, prior, you know, prior to having further discussion? Because once we vote this, then we would have to go back and amend if we decided to not have an amplification. So are we gonna make that call tonight or not?
This is a renewal that has that condition already.
Yes.
But, right, it has it, so.
Go ahead, Mary.
I think we all know, we need to get rid of amplification from, from what, from Bank Street to the post office? That section of 28 is, is our, one of our major problems. And it's because it's compact.
For, for outdoors.
For outdoors.
For outdoor, correct.
Right.
For outdoor amplification, so.
And so I'm good with that.
That's where I am.
That's my question is, are we gonna make that call this evening?
Mary can make that motion with the times, but with that, with the acoustic, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so hold on, no mo, no motion yet. I'm gonna recognize the gentleman in the back and then, and then Ray, you are, Attorney Tomlinson, you'll be up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ed McManus. And I guess when I, I was going through the material for this week, which I don't normally do, but in reading the, through the entertainment renewals, and the, the phrase that, that struck me is the phrase, unamplified recorded music. And I don't understand how you do that. If you have a record and you put it on a record player and you don't run the output through an amplifier, you don't hear anything.
Guess that means you can't have it.
Okay, well, then simply say that, I guess. I mean, you know, there, there, and you know, the question is of whether a radio is or not playing background music, is or not covered, or the TV. Those, I think those should be clear in, in the, in the bylaw.
As I said, when I read it, I thought there was gray area, but if they get an entertainment license for the times that they're requesting, I don't think that that makes a difference. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, since Mr. McManus was in that meeting and so was the chair, I hate to have to be punished to go back and listen to myself again, but I recall the motion that I made being acoustic entertainment outdoors and somehow that got translated into unamplified, uh, recorded music and that's kind of absurd. I, I, I clearly remember seeing acoustic entertainment outdoors.
Well, here's a fresh start and a new motion and that will say what it says. One second, Attorney Tomlinson. Joe, do you wish to weigh in on that last comment on the definition?
No.
Okay. I didn't think so. Attorney Tomlinson, floor is yours.
One final comment. Uh, this is a, a renewal of a license that existed, with the exception of the change in times, prior to the imposition of the acoustic limitation, which was applied solely to Ember and the port last year. That was after, of course, notice of a public hearing. Uh, we haven't had any notice of a public hearing that there was going to be an imposition of any restriction on the license. And as I said before, the entertainment license under the noise by law, or even under liquor regs, makes no discussion whatsoever about limitations on the type of entertainment, whether it be acoustic or otherwise. And so I would suggest to the board that if it is going to make a policy decision tonight to limit acoustic entertainment, or limit outdoor entertainment to acoustic only, it should do so at all licensed establishments. And cherry picking a particular establishment is, well, as we noticed last year, a further recipe for disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
I hear you, Attorney Tomlinson, but I think we have these, what, five? Seven? We have seven before us. We don't have any more before us, and I think we're gonna apply the same standards to those seven and those standards to the next seven that come in. So I don't want to wait, so I'm gonna try a motion.
Well, and thank you for that, Mary. I don't think that we need to be threatened by, and I'm not saying threaten us, threatened by litigation and making a decision based on the fact that somebody doesn't think that we can cater entertainment licenses to an area in proximity to residents, and I, I don't believe that that's a policy decision. I think that we've, we've hashed this out and we're all gonna hash it out in court and it's gonna be what it's gonna be. Bob, you wanted to say a few words?
Bob Nickerson, um, just real quick, um, I live three hundred and something feet from Ember, so I'm a little concerned about this. So if you do allow them to have outside music with amplification, I would really appreciate it not starting at eleven o'clock in the morning. It should be six PM to ten PM. Now, whether he wants to play the radio or something would be one thing, but, you know, what it's been in the past, I think that would be absurd for me to have to listen from eleven, because we know it's not gonna be a hundred and fifty feet. We already been down that road.
To Mr. Nickerson's, to Mr., sorry, Ray Tomlinson again, on behalf of the licensee. To your point, Mr. Nickerson, I think it's incumbent upon the board to choose a uniform standard by which it's going to apply any limitation on outdoor entertainment. If it's an acoustic limitation that says, you know, six PM to ten PM, or six PM to nine PM, it should be uniformly applied to all licensed establishments, including the chamber when they have their stroll. There, we should not enter a situation where licensees are put at a competitive disadvantage because one happens to be one hundred feet or a hundred and fifty feet away from the next. Okay, the, the liquor regs, the entertainment license do not provide for that form of arbitrary treatment. And if we're going to enforce, based on custom and practice and a progressive discipline, then having a baseline by which all licensees are treated equally is absolutely necessary. Thank you, Mr. Nickerson.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have been pressing to do just what Mary was saying for the longest time, and the chair would know that. But it's absurd to say that all things are the same everywhere. I brought that up the last meeting that we had, the depth, not the proximity, the depth of, from the curbside in, uh, from 28, of that zone is a hundred and fifty feet. That's different from other places. I expect, as Mary was saying, as I, as we go down the strip of 28 and the licenses are for renewal, the, I'm gonna hold a consistent position about acoustic entertainment outdoors. The times I'm willing to be flexible for, especially if the TV's involved. But this was an attempt to try to rein in a problem that was not prevalent everywhere around town. It was prevalent there. I mean, I'm confident that we will be upheld if we apply a standard to the licenses in a place that demonstrably has a problem.
Thank you, Don. Go ahead, Mary.
Okay.
Unless you have anything.
I just want to say one thing.
Go ahead.
Because that, I don't disagree with you, Don, but I will say that while I was on the board, we did have the issue with the Harwich Inn and Tavern, prior to it being the Harwich Inn and Tavern.
And, and we did put quite restrictions on those. Agreed. Mary?
Okay, I'm going to move that we approve the 2022 entertainment license for Ember Pizza Inc., DBA Ember, 600 Route 28, weekday eleven AM to twelve AM inside and eleven AM to ten PM outside. Sunday, one PM to twelve AM inside and one PM to ten PM outside. And the inside can be concert, recorded or live music with amplification, and outside shall be acoustic.
Musical. And the motion was acoustic music only, outside.
Acoustic.
Easy for you to say.
I've lost the word. Acoustic music only for outside.
Okay, Julie seconded that.
I did.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, Joe? 400 East, 1421 Orleans Road, weekday, Sunday, five PM to ten PM inside, entertainment, recorded or live music. So 2021 license was weekday, five PM to twelve AM, so they're going back. Nope, they're going forward two hours, inside and five.
No, they're going back.
They're requesting less.
They've requested less.
Twelve, five to ten. Okay, yeah, that's right, they're requesting less. Inside and five PM to ten PM outside, Sunday, two to six. So discussion from the board on the request of less.
And they're not asking for any outside this time?
No.
I don't think they have the tent or whatever it is anymore.
Sunday, two to six outside.
I don't see, yeah, that was last year.
That was last year.
They had outdoor seating last year.
Oh, right, yes, sorry.
I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion on that one, Joe. I move that, Joe.
Stop calling him Joe.
You need to send me home. I move that we vote to approve the 2020 entertainment license for 400 East, 1421 Orleans Road, weekday and Sunday, five PM to ten PM inside. Entertainment type, recorded or live music.
Second. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Hot stove, 551 Route 28, weekday, Friday and Saturday only, nine PM to twelve AM inside, and it says entertainment type concert.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So this would be the similar question to ask council. This is a application that says renewal, but we understand they did not apply in 2020. So same question would be presented to council. Is that a renewal, or is that considered a new license, and is there a different process?
So I would pull that, and Joe, I would make the note that I'd just like to know what concert is. So is it recorded and live, recorded, recorded, a recorded concert, are they having concerts there, or is it live music with amplification?
Cover band.
Or whatever it is. So can we clarify what concert is? And get your question answered by legal, we'll bring that one back. Harwich Inn and Tavern. DBA Harwich Inn and Tavern, 77 Route 28, weekday, twelve PM to twelve AM inside and four PM to eight PM outside. Sunday, one PM to twelve AM inside. Entertainment type, recorded or live music with amplification and dancing. And you all see what they had last year? Is there any change? Twelve to twelve.
Yeah, requirement that they close their windows and doors during indoor entertainment period.
I think it's all the same as 2021.
Okay. Any discussion on that from the board? Joe?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just note that there appears to be a scriven as omission on the Sunday entertainment license. On the reverse side, uh, there was no box checked regarding yes or no, uh, to the question of the activities under 140, 183A, paragraph three. So we would just want to make sure that they complete that application, but I think you could certainly say that the approval would be conditioned on that.
Okay. Discussion from the board. Okay, can I get a motion on this one?
Okay. I move that we vote to approve the following 2020 entertainment license for Harwich Inn and Tavern LLC, DBA Harwich Inn and Tavern Route, uh, 77 Route 28, weekday, twelve noon to twelve midnight inside and four PM to eight PM outside. Sunday, one PM to twelve inside. Entertainment type, recorded or live music with amplification and dancing.
The requirement about the doors and windows being there.
And also, you just, you just said 2020.
Oh, 2021, okay.
Twenty twenty-two.
Oh, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, and it hasn't been seconded yet, so Mary, you could add the language, uh, to Joe, that they have to complete the application.
Okay, with the understanding that they have to complete the application.
And windows and doors.
And the understanding that the doors and the windows must be shut during indoor entertainment.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero, what's that?
Do we want to talk acoustic there?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we didn't say acoustic.
We didn't talk about acoustic for outside. That's another area that we've had a lot of noise complaints.
Don? We didn't have, I don't believe we had noise complaints this year, and we put those restrictions on that license and it seemed to work.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay, alright, I'm good.
And they were never doing it in the evening, on weekends, or Sunday outdoors.
Right.
Okay.
On the, I'd like to skip to seven and then we'll go back to six.
We need to vote on that one.
We did. All in favor?
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero. I think we already did, but we did it again. Right, Joe? Alright, let's skip, uh, six and go to seven. I'm gonna go back to six, because Don called it out at the beginning of the process.
Okay.
So Villa Roma, 278 Route 28, weekday, Sunday to three PM to twelve AM, entertainment, recorded or live music with amplification. This is an indoor entertainment license. They have no outdoor. They're going from four thirty, going from four thirty to ten to three to twelve, but it is also indoor. Joe?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, same scriven as omission on both of their applications. They filled, they indicate yes or no.
Both that, filled out what?
They didn't indicate yes or no on the chapter 140, section 183A, paragraph three question.
Okay, so same motion would apply.
Same motion. Okay, I move that we approve the entertainment license for Villa Roma, 278 Route 28, weekday and Sunday, three PM to midnight. The entertainment type, recorded or live music with amplification inside, pending completion of their application.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion from the board, Don?
This is what I'm gonna vote against because of the times. Otherwise I would have voted for it.
Okay, so Don's got an issue with the time. Mary?
I'm good.
Julie?
Yeah, I don't have an issue. It's inside, so.
Uh, and that is consistent with a lot of these that we're voting. I mean, pretty much everyone is twelve AM.
But it's not really a renewal, is what I'm saying, because the times are different now.
Yeah, but it's a renewal and alter, alteration, just like we just did for, uh, Ember. Joe?
Really, it's a question, it would be a question for the applicant. Really, it's a question, it would be a question for the applicant, but if you look on the front face of both of the applications, it says that they're requesting 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM inside weekday on Sundays, but on the reverse side, where they're asked their days and hours of operation, they indicate that they're operating from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
So they warm up everybody before they show up to eat.
So why don't, I was going to say, 4:00 PM too.
Shall we modify it to four?
Hours of operation? Suggestion, Joe, or do we have them fix this with a real time and come back?
Well, you've, you've held on other ones. It may be prudent to hold on these.
Did you withdraw your second, Julie?
Yeah, I withdrew.
You withdraw your motion?
I do.
Okay, six, Lanyard Bar and Grill. 429 Route 28. Weekday, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM inside and outside. Sunday, 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM inside and outside. Entertainment, recorded or live music with amplification. They were 12 to 12. So they're going 12 to 10.
They were 1 to 9.
And then 1 to 9 on Sunday.
Cutting back an hour on both.
Yeah.
No, they're pushing forward.
Pushing forward an hour on Sunday.
Oh, right, right.
Outside, we have 10s, we have 9s. We have 9 and a 10 already. Pleasure to the board. Don, you called this one out originally?
I'm where I'm at.
Which is?
If it's amplified and it's outside, I'm not voting for it.
Joe?
Just to note that there are additional scrivener's omissions on these applications. They did not answer yes or no on the 140, 183A, paragraph three, and they did not indicate their days and hours of business operation.
We're not going to vote on this one. We'll bring it back.
Okay.
And then I would ask that we review every application going forward, so we're not coming forward with these. Because it's on the agenda, I mean, I'll just comment, I don't know, and maybe the chief can comment, I'm not aware of any noise complaints to this establishment at all in the seven years I've been sitting on the board. Their outdoor, as far as I know, their outdoor enclosure, which they are permitted for, wasn't part of the COVID release package, is enclosed well shielded, and it sets down from the parking lot. Therefore, I'm not, I don't object to outdoor, outdoor amplified there. Chief?
Mr. Chairman, I just have this last season, and there's no, there were no complaints there this last season.
Thank you. Julie, any comments?
No.
Mary?
No.
Okay, we'll bring that back. All right, we have more on the agenda. Old business update regarding the local comprehensive plan. Joe, I asked for an update because I had an applicant send a second application in, and I kind of want to know for the boards, for the board to know how many people have applied to be on this committee, for lack of better words. Have we had interest? Has it been advertised more than once? Where do we stand?
So you'll see the inclusion in the packet, the update to me from our planning and community development director, John Ideman. Bless you. As of December 15th, the solicitation for at-large members was published in the Cape Cod Chronicle in the December 2nd and 9th editions. There was also a standalone story about the local planning committee in the December 9th edition of the Chronicle. It is on the town's website under the planning board, and as of his writing, there had been four responses received to these, four applicants that were sent in on the, by the 15th. The position is, or the advertisement, I should say, is effective through January 15th, 2022. So we have published numerous times and have been getting responses.
And then when do we anticipate starting to interview? If we only have four, we're looking for three at large, if memory serves me correct, or is it more?
Five at large.
Five at large, so four applications for five spots for the most important document the town's going to create. Clearly, the advertisement's not working, or we're not getting people that want to change the direction of town. Mary?
I wonder, because when John Ideman spoke to us, we specifically talked about extending the time into mid-January, just because this time of year, that's not on people's radar. And I think after the beginning of the year, people start to think more about that kind of thing. Will continue to advertise?
We certainly can. What I would recommend is when we get out of the holidays, just another push that it's due the 15th.
Yeah.
So there's a number of ways that we could advertise that. I will also tell you that I had received an inquiry from an individual who was inquiring for a friend, not as the expression goes, but actually inquiring for a friend, and it was after the 15th. The person, this person was asking on behalf of the person about what is the town looking for, and my conversation was, as John has talked about, we're looking for anyone that's willing to give their time, but certainly not anyone that's willing to push an agenda. And when the individual told me some of the background of the person, I suggested that they really should have that person apply, because it sounds like the kind of person we want to have involved. So we may have more. I know there were some folks questioning, they were questioning whether they'd be accepted or not. And so I think what we can do is, when we come out of the holidays, talk about it on the meeting on the 3rd, and just emphasize that there's a deadline coming up. We also may want to consider pushing it out till the end of the month.
Thank you.
I don't think four is bad for an advertisement in December.
Right.
I'm hoping we get more right after the holidays.
Just want to emphasize the importance of this document in this committee. Mary, go ahead.
One other thing, Joe. The police chief and the fire chief post things on Facebook at some times, and then I can share them, and it gets messages. Is there anyone in the town that could do that with something like this position, so that I could share on Facebook, we're looking for?
I certainly think so. I believe Channel 18 does Facebook information and some other departments do, so there might be other ways to push it out. Through social media.
So Jamie, if I call Jamie?
Yep.
Okay.
And if you want, staff can follow up on that. Staff can follow up, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I'll say is this has been a splendid PSA, so maybe that'll push people.
Julie? That's it. Nope, yep, contracts. Mary?
I move that we vote to award a contract to Covielo Electric and General Contracting Company, Inc., in the amount of $138,795 for the installation of lighting at Brooks Park.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Joe?
My administrator's report is to wish everybody a very merry Christmas and best wishes for